It's nine AM. Good morning. This is a Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty four. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, five members are present. We're ready to conduct business today. At this time, would you all please rise for invocation from Pastor Kenneth Slack, Philadelphia Outreach Ministry? Welcome, Kenneth. Looking sharp today. You come in from Philly this morning, or? Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Dear Lord, we praise and we thank you, Lord, for this time of of coming together, Lord, asking that you just bring your blessings down on those supervisors that are here and those who have business before the Board of Supervisors today. We ask that everything that is done, Lord, is done in a spirit of harmony and a spirit of unity. And let us realize that we are here for a purpose higher than ourselves. We are here for the the good of the community and for the good of those who we are representing, Lord. Lord, it's asked that everything that is done, we are led and and guided by you as the steps of a righteous man are ordered by the Lord. We ask that you come into this place right now and give us that spirit of togetherness so that after this meeting, we'll all go forth with the with with a determination for us to continue to do the work of the people. In your son, Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please follow me and we salute our nation's flag. Ready? Salute. Okay, at this time, we'll go to unscathed appearances. Any person can direct the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other item of interest to the public. I think we allow three minutes for each item.
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Kristi Lepke.
Morning, Kristi.
Good morning. Morning Chairman, Miss Boards of Supervisors. Kristi Lepke, Deputy Director of Kings County Behavioral Health. I'm here to update you on the department's progress in enhancing crisis services for the community. We have been working with Good Samaritan Hospital to further develop a comprehensive care crisis care continuum to serve youth, families, and individuals in Kings County. Last week, your board approved a contract with Kingsview to launch a countywide twenty-four-seven call center and mobile crisis team by January twenty twenty-five. These services are two key components of the National Guidelines for Crisis Care Continuum, which also recommends crisis-receiving facilities like a crisis stabilization unit, crisis residential treatment facility, and psychiatric health facility. Good Samaritan Hospital aims to help the county meet this need by applying for the Department of Healthcare Services B-Chip Grant. I won't belabor you with what that means or stands for, to develop these crisis facilities. If awarded, this will not only bring Kings County into alignment with the National Guidelines for Crisis Care, but will also close the gap with Kings County being the last county in the Central Valley to yet have a B-Chip awarded vendor. Other counties within the Central Valley have either been awarded through tribal applications, for-profit applications, nonprofit applications, and some have been successfully awarded through county applications. Those these facilities serve as an alternative to emergency rooms for individuals in psychiatric crisis, offering immediate stabilization at the CSU and if needed, inpatient at the PUF, P-H-F. Those requiring further support can transition to the crisis residential treatment facility, which is a CRT, which typically averages a length of stay of fourteen to twenty-one days to further stabilize and connect to outpatient services. So it goes from like call center to mobile crisis team. If mobile crisis is unable to stabilize, the they can then bring them, whether it be through law enforcement, ambulance, or the mobile team, to the psychiatric crisis stabilization unit instead of going to Adventist Health ER. From there, they can destabilize at the CSU and then be connected back into outpatient services and into the community, or they can go into inpatient services, or they can go to the CRT crisis residential treatment facilities, which bridges an individual from inpatient or crisis stabilization to outpatient in a more kind of intensive and focused way. Research shows that, or sorry, these facilities serve as an alternative. Importantly, these services will aim to be available to all Kings County residents, including those with private insurance, the uninsured, and those duty members and their families at the Lemoore Naval Air Station. Research shows that implementing a full crisis continuum reduces costs associated with emergency room visits, law enforcement, jail bookings, and other county out-of-county placements. It also improves long-term mental health outcomes, creating a healthier, most more stable community and reducing reliance on public services. We believe these facilities are essential for Kings County residents and ask for your support in helping us support securing this grant and these facilities to bring these vital services to our community. Dr. Lewis is here to expand upon this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lewis, how are you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here this morning because I wanted to share with you that we were very gratified about six months ago when Good Samaritan Hospital reached out to us for the potential partnership on this grant. They offered to be the lead with us being the sponsor. They're also reaching out to many other counties and working with some other counties in our area and up north. We were we've been in communication with them and sort of working out the details over time, and in the last six months, it became apparent that the public health campus might be an ideal location for these three facilities, which would be a crisis stabilization unit, a crisis residential unit, and a PUF, which is basically a small psychiatric hospital. The public health buildings with their central location, their history of providing health care, their proximity to the hospital seem to be ideal. And additionally, we've determined over time that one of the ways that we can help to meet the match with Good Samaritan Hospital is that this would be a good use for opioid settlement funds. So it's one of the ways that we can help to meet this match. So our plan in the next couple of weeks is to go out to the community and to see community comment on this in the general area all around the public health building. As we receive the community comment and get all that information, we plan to come back to you in about two weeks with a study session and then also a request for an action potentially to use that campus to develop with these grant funds. So the grant funds would be used to renovate the building and turn it into the long-term facility, which would be the PUF, which is a psychiatric hospital, the stabilization unit, and the residential unit, all on the same campus. So we feel like this is a kind of once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The grant funding is the timing couldn't be better. We are ready for this now that we have mobile crisis, and so I just wanted to alert you that that's what we're about to do. We're about to go out to the community and let you know that this is our plan. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I know it's not on the agenda. We can't discuss it, but you know, I was there during the meetings. I look forward to having it brought back to us, and we can vote on it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Once you get it to us, we can talk about it.
Great.
All right.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. I don't appear than anybody online has. Their hand raised.
Anybody else in the audience have anything they want to say? Seeing none, we'll move on, and we'll go to approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from the regular meeting on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
There's nothing to report.
Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Hey, five in favor. Thank you. We'll move on now to consent counter. All items on a consent counter listed as one motion, and any item can be polled by a supervisor if need be. Move is presented, Ms. Chair. Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Might have been a correction on one of the calendar items.
Oh.
One of the resolutions has the incorrect date, and I was trying to determine which one it was. It's the public health item, LICN. It has an incorrect date in the resolution. It says September thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. It should be September thirty, twenty twenty-seven. So if we can amend that.
Mine says September thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Understood.
Well, then, we have an incorrect document on our website. So I'm not sure who fixed that.
IT.
I apologize.
IT.
It wasn't IT. I apologize.
Okay.
It's July thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
You good with that?
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Correct. Yeah, as needed.
Okay.
And if it's not that one, just fix the one that's broken.
Okay. Joe Nevs.
We have a supervisor Nevs in motion and a supervisor Fagundes as second.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
I apologize for the interruption.
No problem. Okay, we'll go on now to regular calendar, and we have Fire Department, Sal Vador Flores. Good morning, Sal. Chief.
Good, good, good morning, Chair, Honorable Board, C.A. Martinez, members of the staff. With you today, just like last month, we are presenting a request for a resolution.
Everybody's wanting to talk today.
That's gonna tell us Tony is gonna be hot this week.
Move to coastal areas.
Yeah.
I apologize about that IT or AI interruption. So anyways, as I was saying, is just like last month, we are presenting this month a request for proclamation for awareness. In this case, we're bringing it on the fire side of it. Our Fire Marshal Blake will expand on it here in a second. I just want to make some some notes about this county and and the historical component of it. Last year, out of three hundred and eighty-eight fires that we had, fifty-eight of them within the community were structured, and there was a total of two fatalities. One of them was actually in a vehicle, the other one was in actual structure. This year, we are thankfully no reported deaths this year, but it just kind of brings an awareness that at any given moment, if we're not prepared, we're we don't know what to do, we could be faced with a situation that we might have to make life-or-death decisions. But with that being said, turn it over to Blake, Fire Marshal.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Blake Adney, Fire Marshal, Kings County Fire Department. Just a quick overview, the Kings County Fire Department requests the board to proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-four as Fire Prevention Month in Kings County. During this time, the Fire Department will bring fire safety awareness and public education to the communities that Kings County serves. Currently, we do do this every year. We have done it every year in October. This is our first time formally bringing it up to your attention and making you guys aware. Quick background, since nineteen twenty-two, the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, has sponsored the Public Observance of Fire Prevention Week. In nineteen twenty-five, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in the country. During Fire Prevention Week and month, children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in case of a fire. Firefighters provide lifesaving public education through community outreach programs and school visits that allow local fire stations to directly interact with children in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fires, and we are currently working on that right now. Our crews are out there scheduling stuff with schools, getting open house things set up so the schools can come through and and make people aware.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Robinson and a second by Supervisor Nevs.
Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October ninth in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire, which began on October eighth, eighteen seventy-one, and caused devastating damage. The Kings County Fire Department is committed to continuing this tradition. The attached resolution proclaims the month of October as Fire Prevention Month by the Board of Supervisors and promotes community resiliency by bringing awareness to the residents of Kings County. This effort is met by conducting fire education throughout schools and community events and promoting resiliency. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by County Council as to form.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes, five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going now to probation department, and we have Leonard Baker. Good morning.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Leonard Baker, probation. I'm before your board requesting approval of an addendum to the subscription agreement with Lexipol for additional service hours effective October one twenty-four through March thirty-one twenty-five, and approve an addendum to the subscription with Lexipol for ongoing policy update management services effective October one twenty-four through September thirty twenty-five. Probation management's been working diligently to finalize a formal and legally sound policy and procedure for the department after working with Human Resources and the Probation Officers Association. Lexipol provides a comprehensive and legally defensible policy for for over thirty-three hundred law enforcement agencies across the country. Legally defensible refers to the automatic updates that follow any change in case law or legislation that may impact an agency. Our department will be implementing the policy and are in need of additional technical support hours to prepare the release of the policy. Lexipol will work directly with our department to incorporate any legal changes to the existing policy, therefore providing risk mitigation as the legal mandates on the department continually increase. Lexipol's ongoing support with update management services will streamline this process and ensure the department is current with any and all necessary updates to the policy. The addendums have been reviewed and approved by County Council as to form and by risk. There is no jump impact to the general fund. The increased in expense of twelve thousand three hundred ninety-five includes the annual probation policy update management basic services of nine thousand eight hundred and five dollars and a one-time purchase of fourteen hours of probation implementation support, two thousand five hundred ninety dollars, which will be paid using Senate Bill six seventy-eight, community corrections performance incentives, and YOBG, which is Youth Defender Block grant funding. Thank you for your consideration. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Comments for Blake? Thank you. Any question or comments for Mr. Baker? You know, I think. I have motion. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Hey, five in favor. You're good to go. Thank you. Move on now to Public Health Department. Looks like we have Heather Campos here today. Morning, Heather.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Campos with Public Health. I'm actually gonna introduce our team today to do the proclamation for the SIDS awareness. So Nicole Fisher is a supervising public health nurse, and it'll be her and her team, so.
Thank you. Good morning.
Great. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I stand before you today to announce October twenty twenty-four as National SIDS Awareness Month in Kings County. Sudden Infant Death Syndrome, or SIDS, is the sudden death of an infant before their first birthday, which is left unexplained after a comprehensive case investigation. A thorough case investigation involves a complete autopsy, investigation, and examination of the death scene, and a review of the medical history of the family and infant. While the exact cause of sudden infant death syndrome remains unknown, it is critical to recognize its risk factors and to implement effective strategies for reducing these risks and providing support systems. Next, we'll share some data on SIDS.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Miriam Morales. I am a public health nurse and also the SIDS coordinator for the county. In California, SIDS is the second-leading cause of infant deaths, with a hundred and nine deaths in two thousand twenty-two. We also know that in California, as in the nation, rates of severe maternal morbidity are much higher among non-Hispanic Black African-American women compared to white women. As a higher, oh, sorry, I apologize. As a nation, non-Hispanic Blacks slash African-American infants have two-point-nine times the sudden infant death syndrome mortality rate as non-Hispanic whites in two thousand twenty. Fortunately, according to the Kings County two thousand twenty-three Community Health Needs Assessment, Kings County has achieved the healthy people target for infant mortality, highlighting the positive impact of the maternal-child adolescent health programs, educational initiatives in the community. Even with this achievement, we know we still have a lot of work to do. We need to prioritize women in our county. By promoting evidence-based practices, we can continue to reduce sudden unexpected infant deaths or SEWIDS, particularly SIDS in Kings County. Breastfeeding is a highly effective and is recommended for parents to provide breast milk for at least two months, which can reduce the risk of SIDS by fifty percent. Creating a safe sleep environment is crucial, as using non-approved sleep surfaces significantly increases the risk of suffocation. While it is acknowledged that SIDS and SEWID are influenced by multiple factors rather than a single cause, this highlights the importance of education on the issue. Therefore, is it advised that infants under one year old be placed on their backs for all sleep? In safe sleep settings, this can include a flat mattress and an empty crib, and that parents adhere to health recommendations such as avoiding smoking and alcohol. Next, we will share local resources.
Thank you.
The Maternal-Child Adolescent Health, or MCH, program has a public health nurse, SIDS coordinator, which is Miriam that just spoke, that is available to assist grieving families through a SIDS death. The events following a SIDS death can be very overwhelming with the presence of first responders, child protective services, and the coroner's personnel. The coordinator is there to identify and support the needs of the family. Specifically, the SIDS coordinator is able to assist with grief and bereavement services and support through home visits and/or mail resource packets to families suffering in infant loss. Other resources include grief support groups from nearby hospitals like Adventist Health and Kuya Health, and community members can also locate grief support groups in the area using the website griefshare.com. Fortunately, with the internet, we are now able to connect families with grief services from the reassurance of their home as well as using online support groups. Next, we'll share our community activities for SIDS Awareness Month.
Hi, Jessica Penell. I'm a health education specialist. This month, MCH will be posting social media with SIDS risk reduction strategies such as using cribs and bassinets approved by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. There's also going to be a social media challenge called Clear the Crib. During the month of October, our staff will be participating in the Clear the Crib challenge. So please watch out for our social media for a video compilation at the end of the month of our staff participating in this challenge to bring the reminder to always look around at what is around your baby, especially in the crib, to make it as safe as possible. Later this month, we will be participating in the WIC Community Baby Shower for expectant moms to provide education on safe sleep practices to decrease the risk of SIDS. This is a well-attended event at WIC, and we provide the training in English and Spanish. MCH has also assisted the Central Valley Safe Sleep Coalition to organize the Second Annual Learning Conference that will be held in October for providers. This event will include a presentation by Dr. Thomas Keans, an expert on respiratory and pulmonary disorders in children at Children's Hospital in Los Angeles, and he is an expert in sudden infant death syndrome. This event will take place at the Valley Children's Hospital on October twenty-sixth. Although we are announcing October as SIDS Awareness Month, our SIDS and safe sleep promotion goes on throughout the year by participating in several kinds of community events providing safe sleep and SIDS education. Our favorite activity is to engage the community using our SIDS baby doll and the crib to demonstrate the appearance of a safe sleep environment. This activity attracts several members of the family unit and allows them to put into practice the information they just learned. Lastly, today, we would like to provide the board with these pink and blue ribbons that honor the memory of infants lost to SIDS and supports the ongoing research and risk reduction efforts through SIDS awareness.
Finally, the Kings County Department of Public Health is asking the board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming October two thousand twenty-four as National SIDS Awareness Month in Kings County. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
Don't move.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundes. Second by Supervisor Valley. Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item has been polled by Public Works Department, and we're gonna move on to the Sheriff's Office, and we have Mr. Robert Thayer here today. Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Robert Thayer, Under Sheriff. We're here this morning to seek the board's authorization to have Sheriff Robinson sign an agreement with Reef Sunset School District to keep our school resource deputy in their high school. We put one out there last year. The the school district asked us, so we put Trent Augustus out there in Avon. They've asked to repeat that again for this year. The school district pays fifty percent of of the position. There's no impact to our budget. It's 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 actually in our budget now. This is just a matter of getting this retroactively signed from August fourteenth of this this past year through June of of twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I know Supervisor Robinson and myself went to the cops, had a cop grant, helped cover some of those costs, so if every couple of years, we gotta do it, so.
Right.
I don't think it was up this year, but we were preparing ourselves for next year, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Valley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor.
Thank you.
Yeah, we went. It was really kind of cool because the secretary of Department of Justice came in and visited with us for about an hour.
Fantastic.
That's cool.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to administration, and we have Gisele. Good morning, Gisele.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gisele Coia, Administrative Analyst, County of Kings Administration. Before you this morning is consideration to approve the updated telework policy for county employees, which builds upon the policy initially introduced and approved in October twenty twenty-three. This policy was implemented with the goal of improving employee morale, enhancing retention, and strengthening our recruitment efforts by modernizing work locations and utilizing current technologies. The updated policy solidifies the framework for long-term implementation, ensuring that we continue to meet the evolving needs of our employees while maintaining alignment with the county's operational goals. Key modifications to the telework policy include the continued voluntary nature of participation, allowing eligible employees to work remotely up to two days per week at the discretion of department heads. These updates incorporate feedback from employees who have actively engaged in telework programs, ensuring that the policy better reflects both employee needs and department-specific requirements. The rationale for updating this policy stems from the increasing demand for flexible work arrangements in the public and private sectors. Telework has become a key factor in recruitment, and many qualified candidates have declined employment offers due to the lack of remote work flexibility. Offering telework options allows us to remain competitive in the job market, and importantly, many of our employees have reportedly increased productivity and satisfaction when given the opportunity to work remotely. In terms of fiscal impact, the implementation of this policy will not require any additional funding. Each department has assessed its equipment needs, and any necessary remote work tools will be covered by the departments themselves. The success of telework during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, when a significant portion of our workforce operated remotely, demonstrated that employees could main- demonstrated that employees could maintain or even improve their work performance while performing from home, while working from home. Pilot programs conducted after the pandemic further confirmed the viability of telework, leading us to offer the option on a broader scale. By continuing to offer telework, we're positioning the county to achieve both operational success and a positive productive work environment for our employees. With that, the recommendation before you this morning is to approve this updated telework policy. Thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments? We just want to know if we can get us some feedback from Sam. Telework policy.
Yep. So it actually has provided to be successful. We did survey the employees when we first launched it um through our forms, which is through our Microsoft Office. We did another survey recently. Um, and we also seeked feedback from department heads on the current policy. And so it's still remaining the same. It's two days a week. Um, we think it's effective. Again, it's all the discretion of department heads if they want to participate or not. Um, about almost all the departments are except probably about two or not, three are not participating. Um, but it has proven to be successful. Um, I mean, we've had instances where the power has gone off and we are able to VPN and get in and vice versa. So um it's been real successful. Again, um, we wanted to do this long term. We had already adopted the policy in October. It was just really to kind of clean up some um items and ask your board if you wanted us to, you know, revisit it again.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it? Yeah. You get your answer? Yeah. Anybody else having a comment? I know I I wasn't a big fan of this at beginning of it. I'm learning to uh I I see the value in it. So I'm coming around slowly. But I always thought that when you go to work, you go to work and you get dressed to go to work. But uh I'm coming around. So I think it helps some of our employees that that really don't need to be here. They're on the computer all day. They might as well be at computer home and then help with their uh their self esteem, I guess, or productivity. So uh I look forward to it. You ready to go to three days? No, I'm I'm still I'm still. I'm a still get up and go to work guy. So uh yeah. As it works and department heads have no problem with it and the work getting done, I'm okay with it. Yeah, I worked from home uh even before the pandemic. So it doesn't matter as long as you're doing your job.
Two days are sufficient. I think um some departments only do one day. So it's really up to departments.
I would prefer I just stay home and not work, whatever. Maybe because it's my uh my state of mind when I'm not at work, I'm not working. So it's too much distraction than my house. So uh it's different for me than it would be for anybody else. Any other comments?
So move it, Chair.
Move by supervisor Nevs. Second by. You didn't build a basement in your neighborhood? No. Second by supervisor for goodness. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. I'm in favor. Now, if I'm on a if I'm doing a Zoom call or something, it seems like everybody has to come to the door, the dog has to bark or someone. Yeah, just distracting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. Okay, we'll move on now to uh board member comments. Supervisor. Robinson.
Okay. Who's that again?
He's teleworking.
He's. That's right. Been here twenty minutes earlier, but there was a car in front of me coming to work.
Yes, yes, Supervisor Verboon. Need to speed up when Supervisor Verboon's behind you. Uh, Wednesday, attended Housing Authority with supervisors and then Wednesday evening through Friday, Supervisor Verboon and I went down to the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties, which is down in Bakersfield. They did a great job of hosting. Uh, lots of informative speakers, including Kern County Sheriff, Donna Youngblood, uh Kern County DA Cynthia Zimmer, Assemblywoman Dr. Jasmeet Bains, Senator Melissa Hurtado and Senator Shannon Groves Field Rep. Thanks to Kern County Supervisor and Chairman David Couch uh and his team for a for a job well done. Uh, for me, it was uh it was a nice chance for me to reconnect. One of the speakers, which I had no idea at the time, uh was a fraternity brother I haven't seen in thirty years. And evidently, a pretty well accomplished one, uh is a fourth generation farmer with about eight thousand acres. So.
And he wrote a book.
And he wrote a book. So great conference. Thanks again to Kern County.
Okay, I know that uh I was there too and I got stories to go along with that. So. Did your buddy remember the secret handshake?
You know, I didn't ask him all that stuff. I I almost put him on the spot, but I figured I'd attempt to be professional.
Uh, very brief, Mr. Chair, this Saturday is the annual uh Corncos Cotton Festival. Uh, with the parade, I think that kicks off at uh uh ten AM. And it's an Elvis theme homecoming week. So the thing down, no. Uh, Jeremy Pierce is coming. So four o'clock, he's going to hit the stage uh in downtown Corcoran and everyone's looking forward to his show and should be a good time. Good. Thank you. Supervisor Fagundes.
Uh, lots of calls this week for uh road closures, high speed rail and also the Houston Bridge. A lot of questions. I want to know why. How come?
Would you tell them they're not done?
Like whatever. What can I say?
Yeah, it's in planning right now.
Yeah, so.
They're engineering it all up, being engineered.
Go home and charge the battery in my phone.
Yep. Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Kings Western Recycling Meeting was canceled for September due to lack of action items. The Housing Authority, we did uh get around to approving the uh audit. And so I have a copy for Eric uh to look at. Uh, but uh and then wrote off the uh quarter ending uh uh write offs as part of the organization. Uh, LAFCO canceled also with lack of uh items uh on the agenda. The uh September Kings County Public Transit Agency meeting, we accepted the State of Good Repairs Funds, approved the surplus uh of service truck uh to the city of Avonale and also received an update on the Transit Center Construction Project. We also acknowledged Craig Wilson of MV Transportation who on his retirement and wished him well. Uh, he will work out the rest of uh October, but then uh get earn a well deserved uh retirement. The Kings County Association of Governments also held their meeting on September twenty fifth. We heard the Caltrans report, heard about the Valley Voice trip to Washington DC and approved several more area wide transit uh area wide planning reviews uh that affect the entire Kings County. Uh, continue to announce volleyball at Lamoore College. Um, on September twenty sixth, the Lamoore Volunteer Fire Department opened up the Time Capsule that was at the cornerstone of the old Lamoore City Hall and Fire Station. Um, the uh there were some fire department badges, a list of members of the fire department, uh city officials and a copy of the uh original copy of the fire department charter. And all of these items will be displayed um at the ceremony museum uh later on this month. The uh American Legion had breakfast on Friday. On Saturday, Kathy and I attended the ceremony museum, the Legends of Lamoore Cemetery Walk. A wonderful cast of individuals that portrayed historic individuals and couples like uh TT Olivera was uh uh done by Tony, uh the Wilsons of uh the Island School District and others. And everyone did a just a fabulous job and it was a nice, nice day. Uh, continue to announce football in Kalanga uh for the Kalanga College. And then on Saturday night, attended the Casa Dinner Night of Hope. Uh, the event uh was held at the Hanford Civic. Well attended, uh supports the court appointed special advocates of Kings County of which Calviva uh is a sponsor. And then on Sunday, attended the Stratford Portuguese Celebration. Thank you luncheon held at the hall, mountain oysters, mussels, barbecued uh oysters on the half shell. Uh, and then we had lunch of uh pork, uh Portuguese pork, uh Portuguese beans and salad with uh rice pudding pudding.
You gotta be Portuguese to go that or huh? Can you you gotta be Portuguese to go that?
Um, you know, no, I took my wife. So yeah, you can so but uh yeah, she's not much for uh oysters, but um they everything turned out well. The weather was nice and so uh just a little thank you for everyone that works and supports uh that Portuguese culture. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so supervisor Robinson and myself and Karia and Matthew Boyett also attended the San Joaquin Valley Regional Area Conference, which is made up of eight counties uh like kind people in the same room. Uh, started off on uh Wednesday evening with a dinner at the Wool Growers. Started at seven thirty in the morning and we had uh speakers all day. Uh, one was the most interesting was the fact that uh Donna Youngblood and Cynthia Zimmer talked about the how hard it is to get employees to work and a generation, Gen X, right? They don't want to work. Uh, they were fifty percent uh down on their recruitment in their DA's office. They're up to seventy percent now. It's very difficult to keep employees. Nobody wants to work. Same problem we're having here. Um, talked about Prop forty seven, who created it and why you need to vote for Prop thirty five uh and make a do your research on that. Whoever who created Prop forty seven uh really hurt the whole entire state of California. Now they might be running for president. So you got to be careful on who you vote for there. Make sure you do your research. Uh, talk about the impacts. Uh, we had one water session and they had the wonderful corporation, Grimway Farms and the Farm Bureau and your buddy uh from his farm.
Mike Young.
Uh, the wonderful corporation was basically up there, talked about how they were able to farm through drought years on the northwest corner of Kern County. And uh I called him out on taking our water. Uh, therefore he would not make eye contact. Maybe we left the room. And the Farm Bureau just said that we need to donate to them to help fight the cause, but they were fighting for him, not us. So they probably won't be invited back next year for that reason. Uh, what else we talk about? Oh, we took a we took a tour of the morgue. And I didn't want to go. I didn't care to see a morgue. We got a nice morgue here. And so supervisor Robinson was going to go. Uh, so I was on a bus. He wouldn't answer his phone. So I'll go tell him where I'm going to be at when he gets back, right? If I get on a bus, bus takes off. Well, Rusty ain't on the bus. Rusty's up in his room trying to help a neighbor get into his room and I call him. He don't answer his phone. I call Karia. Karia's leaving to go home. So Karia had to go back to the hotel, pick up Rusty, drop him off at the morgue. But it was a good experience. Um, it's a hundred and ten thousand square feet. Uh, they have three hundred and fifty slots for deceased people. Uh, we got to go through the whole process from uh if you're a victim family or you're the victim and how they how they do it to where they can be open twenty four hours a day without having anybody on site. Uh, they had the stations where they did the autopsies and uh separated three different freezers or four different freezers for the bodies that were in there. And uh very enlightening that uh you know, the end of the end of life for people and uh they're very respectful, no matter where you came from. If you were found on the street with no family or you had a loved family that that loved you, uh they treated it the same and they had very respectful. So uh big deal for them. It looks like the County of Kern is going to expand. They bought an old warehouse that put this in at the end of the Meadows Field Airport. And they bought some more property to expand their all the facility to get it, you know, as they grow in the future. But they also have had two hundred and eighty eight fentanyl deaths this year alone. So that's just sad to see because those are uh all caused because of the the border crisis, because the drugs are coming over the border and they can't get control of it. So it's coming over as this simple pain medication with lace of fentanyl and people are dying. So that's something we gotta we gotta get under under control. Uh, I think that's about it. It will now to board correspondence from uh.
Yes, thank you. So the board received correspondence from the California Energy Commission dated September thirteenth regarding a notice of preparation for environmental impact report for thirty days. The board received an invitation from the Kings County Office of Education for the Dream Center Grand Opening on October eighth from eleven to one. The board lastly received a correspondence from the US Department of Interiors dated September twenty fourth regarding the notice of decision on an application to have a property accepted by the United States um to put it in a trust. For upcoming events, behavioral health will host its family member support unit tonight, Tuesday, October first from five thirty to seven thirty here on campus at the Kings Building. The Kings County Library will host its movie time at the Hanford Branch Library today from three thirty to five thirty. Behavioral Health will host its veteran support group uh next Tuesday, October eighth from five thirty to seven thirty at the Veteran Memorial Hall here in Hanford. And lastly, the Kings County Fire Department will host the public safety event on Thursday, October twenty fourth at the Kettleman City Park from five to seven PM. There will be free work resources and we're still looking if anyone wants, any department actually wants to have a booth out there, please reach out to Fire Chief for um for details. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for October eighth. We have a short agenda. Administration has one item on chemical waste quarterly update. Ad co-op uh on national for each week in Kings County. Ad Commissioner has an agreement with Department of Food and Agriculture for um counties' diseases. Um, health has two items waiving the administrative fee for vaccines offered to Kings County residents. And the sheriff has an item regarding a boating safety equipment grant application. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one thing I forgot is uh on Friday morning, we go over a meeting and discuss things that we, you know, how to prepare for next year's deal. And we also had a presentation made by uh Tone Consulting. Tone Consulting is doing a deal with broadband, the final mile. We all eight counties agreed to do an MOU together to finish the final mile of our broadband. And so that should be coming forward through CSAC. Uh, so we'll look forward to doing that in the future. Um, kind of cool. Get that done. A lot of talk about it. Uh, but we're we're stronger together. We'll apply for these grants. So the eight counties at one time, Fresno, Madera, and I believe Kern has already done or maybe Tulare, one of them has done it. So we're all going to be together. So that's good. Um, I think we're it, right? We got closed session. We're going to report out in closed session.
I don't anticipate any reporting out today.
Okay, uh, we'll move on now to closed session as outlined. And uh we'll be back here October eighth at nine AM. Thank you very much.